I've got all sorts coming up on the screen. May I welcome members and the viewing public to this briefing of members of the council being conducted remotely, and may I wish you all a happy new year. Please, can I have your attention whilst I have to make a few announcements about how this meeting will be conducted? This briefing meeting is being conducted using Zoom as a virtual platform and will be live streamed for the public to view via the council's Public Eye webcast site. This will mean that the recording will also be available for people to view later on through the council's website. Because this briefing is being webcast, please can I ask members to keep their cameras turned on for the duration of this meeting? To help make this meeting run as smoothly as possible, it is important that participants in the virtual meeting room have their microphone on mute for the duration of the meeting. Please only unmute when you are invited to speak. This will help reduce the scope for noise and interference. May I also ask that all mobile phones and similar devices are all turned to silent in order to remove any potential disturbance when speaking at the meeting? Thank you in advance for your cooperation with this. I need to remind members that the guidance provided to them earlier in the week by Paul Robinson from Direct Democratic Services, that if you wish to speak at the meeting, you should use the Zoom chat facility to request to speak. It's important that you use the message send to everyone and not directly to himself. Officers will be monitoring the chat on my behalf and messages sent directly to me run the risk of you not being, of the risk of you being overlooked. Please don't use the chat facility for any other purpose. Again, thank you in advance for your cooperation. Before moving to the main item of business on the agenda for today's meeting, I wish to say a few words regarding the cancellation of the formal meeting of the council which was scheduled to be held today. In the 2020 governance, the government introduced a temporary regulation permitting local authorities to hold their meetings remotely. Those temporary regulations ended in early May 2021 and have not been extended. Without a change being made to the law, local authority meetings have to be conducted in person in order to be properly convened. Following the Omicron variant outbreak and the recipients of advice from the Office for the Director of Public Health, the need for meetings scheduled for remainder of December and early January was reviewed by the corporate members group in order to minimise in-person contact. The group included all the leaders of the political groups on the council. As a result, it was agreed that the formal decision-making council meeting scheduled for today would be cancelled and that an online video conference be held in its place in public to enable the Director of Public Health of Sheffield to provide an update on Covid. The update on Covid was to have one of, would have been one of the two main items of business for the January meeting. Of the two decisions which had been scheduled to be taken at that meeting, one has been deferred to the next council meeting and the other has been taken by the chief exec using emergency powers with the approval of the political group leaders. The other main item of business which was to have been considered at the meeting was petitions and public questions. Because this meeting has been convened in accordance with the provision of Local Government Act 1972, questions and petitions from the public will not be taken at this briefing. Members of the public who want to present petitions or ask questions at the January council meeting will be given the opportunity to do so at the next meeting on Wednesday, the 2nd of February. Alternatively, petitions can be presented and questions can be asked at the meeting of the corporate operative executive on the 19th, Wednesday, the 19th of January. The council meeting for February and March, which will have to be held in person, will now be held at the Pons Forge International Sports Centre to ensure safe working practice for all our council members and officers and members of the public. I shall now move to the main focus of today's meeting to receive a presentation from Greg Fell, the Director of Sheffield's Public Health, providing a briefing on the current situation regarding Covid-19 pandemic. Greg is accompanied today by Anthony Gore, a GP at a practice in the city and a clinical director for children and young people and maternity at the NHS Sheffield Clinical Commissioning Group. This will be followed by the opportunity for members of the council to ask questions. If members wish to speak and ask a question, I may remind them that they need to request so of the Zoom chat using the facility and message to everyone and not directly to myself. To assist me to manage this process, it would be appreciated if you could also specifically tell us the topic of the question that you wish to ask. This will assist me to manage this process. I will invite members to ask their questions and I may group questions accordingly to the topic and take perhaps two or three questions at a time. Greg and Anthony will be responding, but answers may have to be provided later in writing if they can't fully answer your questions. Thank you for that, for listening to that long brief, colleagues. I'm now going to hand over to Greg Fell.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. So, Lord Mayor's done an introduction of Anthony, so I won't repeat that. I believe you've had the set of slides I'm going to talk to, so I'm going to talk to them reasonably quickly, aim to talk for about 10 minutes. I'll then hand over to Anthony to add in any particularly important bits that I left off and then, as Lord Mayor says, open for questions. So with no further ado, I shall screen share. Share. Someone shouts to tell me you can see that, okay. Yeah, thank you. So, two years in and counting, and we all want this to be over. Patently apparently it's not over yet. So I'll talk for about 10 minutes of these slides, a bit of an overview of the core concerns, a bit of an overview of epidemiology as it is of today, impact of the epidemiology, the vaccination programme which is clearly still really, really rather important, and some thoughts on the strategy now and then going forward, and all in 10 minutes. Key concerns now, the case rate is extremely high, orders of magnitude higher than we've seen at any point in the whole of the pandemic. I shall come on to the specifics in a minute. Case numbers are high, but harm is low in young people, children, young people. Case numbers are high and there are a non-trivial number of admissions in 18 to 55-year-olds. In fact, no, non-trivial underplays that, a significant number of admissions in 18 to 55-year-olds, and the case rate is increasing in over 65s, which have always been the group I've been most worried about. Perhaps less so now because the over 65ers are a very well-vaccinated and boosted group of people, so perhaps less so. But still, case rates are going up in the over 65s and that's still a concern. A large spike in admissions, perhaps stabilising a little bit, but number of people on the spiritual report remains high. And I would say at the outset, a lot of the media and public narrative is about what's happening in hospitals. Omicron would appear to be creating a lower acuity illness in people, i.e. there is some truth in the it's milder. I shall come on to the caveats on that in a second, but that also means a significant number of people are poorly enough to present to primary care. The pressures in primary care and social care are just as unsustainable as the pressures within hospital, and that is a big deal and it's really important, so I'll come on to that. Steady state, steady reports of deaths in hospital, but really very low, certainly not in the, anywhere like the same places they have been in previous waves. Vaccination programme all up is going exceptionally well, but vaccination uptake in 12 to 15-year-olds is slow, but more of a concern for me is the 100,000-plus unvaccinated adults. That's by a long way my most pressing concern of the moment. So epidemiology, this is from the course of the whole pandemic. This was the initial wave and this is the case rate, it didn't get very high. This was the autumn, autumn 2020 spike. This was the alpha spike. This was the delta spike, which just for most of the spring, summer, autumn trundled along at a case rate of about 250 to 300,000, 400,000 over the seven-day period. Omicron struck, the numbers you can see are perfectly apparent, it invented a whole new meaning to the word exponential growth and currently we're hovering at about 17, 1800 cases per 100,000 population in a seven-day period. Give you some example of what that looks like in numbers, I think this was the last full week for which I've got testing data, about 20,000 people, more than 20,000 people got a PCR test, of which there were more than 10,000 people tested positive, more than 10,000 cases, and numbers hugely above what we've ever seen for any, the graph is apparent, any, any point in a pandemic thus far. The all-time chart looks like this, so this is all cases, the grey bar, hospitalisations, the blue line, and you can see here hospitalisation rate when case rate is, was, was much higher here. Deaths are really not there now and the green, two green lines are vaccination dose one, vaccination dose two and boosters. Note this little blip here just before Christmas, and I shall come on to that little blip because that, that little blip has saved many, many, many lives. That little blip isn't, isn't isolated to Sheffield, it happened certainly across England, probably across the whole of the UK, but that blip matters. So, but what we're seeing is that given our case rates currently, which are way off the chart up here, nearly on a new chart, the hospitalisation rate is certainly nowhere near as high as it would have been had we not had a pretty high level of vaccine coverage, aka despite my worries in November, early December onwards, when Omicron first emerged, there was a potential that there was significant vaccine escape. The vaccine is still protecting us from serious illness to a, to a very, very, very high level, and it has done the job that it promised, and I think we'd all be thankful for that. Age bands, currently the epidemiology is that the age-specific case rate is going up in all age groups, principally early on in the Omicron wave driven by early working age, but it's going up in all, all, all age groups at the moment and perhaps beginning to stabilise a bit, but difficult to draw too many definitive conclusions to that because there's, there have been and just about still are, but it's easing, significant issues with regard to access to PCRs because there were so many people poorly seeking tests, lab capacity was a big national problem. So interpreting the case rate data is actually quite more, more difficult than you would imagine, but perhaps some signs that the case rate by, split by age band and across the whole population is beginning to stabilise a bit, that again, probably has happened in London, London's a couple of weeks ahead, a couple of weeks ahead of us. So, so some, some signs that the wave will be relatively short, but the consequent knock-on impacts may not be so short, and I'll come on to that. Where Sheffield looks in comparison to the whole of the country, for the geographically challenged audience, Sheffield is there, so mid-table for want of a better phrase. Obviously, it's much, much higher rates in the north-west of the country, slightly higher rates in most of the rest of Yorkshire, certainly South Yorkshire, but, but these are, anyway you cut it, these, the rates that we've got, the numbers that we've got are hugely more than we've ever seen at any point. So there's, you know, just because we're mid-table, that doesn't mean we're in a comfortable position here, even in the south-west of England, those, those rates are still very, 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 very high. So, but that's the look of the look and feel of the epidemiology nationally. Vaccine coverage, the numbers are too small to, to see on the, on the chart, but all up, 70% of people who are eligible for a booster have had one dose, two dose and booster. And Sheffield is still the leading of the core cities. I think on just about any cut of the data and any way you cook, any way you cut it by age and or by, by, by all the means, Sheffield is still the leading of the core cities, but, but you can see, you know, 77%, but fully, fully vax plus booster means 23% not. So there's still 100,000 odd people who are adults who haven't yet had any vaccine at all, and that is a concern for me. Hard to know what we could be doing that we aren't doing, to be fair. Lots of people will have made an informed choice not to be vaccinated. It's a medical intervention, people should make an informed decision. I frequently remind people to, to test the information base upon which they've made the informed bit of that informed choice, but we, I think you should be assured that as a city we are doing all we possibly can, always keen to hear new ideas, but I think it's just a struggle to think of things that we could be doing. There is an age cohort difference, so if you split it by age, the 80-plus, the dose one, dose two plus booster vaccination coverage is well north of 90%, probably closer to 95%, but if you look at the 18 to 25 group, it's probably closer to 50%. So yeah, the, the level of protective vaccine protection comes down as you come through the ages, but the most important message from that is that those are most likely to be made seriously poorly. Remember, this is a very, very, very age-driven disease, that group are the best protected. Sadly, there are still geographic and ethnic differences, east-west split, we've talked about that before, and a black-white Asian split also. Again, done a lot of work with and through community and faith leaders and making the vaccination as accessible as possible. So whilst there is a split, one, it's not a bigger split as I feared it might be, and two, like for the general populations, it's actually hard to know what we could be doing that we aren't doing, but that work, that work continues. Now, remember this blip here, when Omicron broke out in mid-December, the available science at that time was very clear that, that two doses wasn't enough. Two doses plus booster and the response, the immune response that would give would almost certainly have been enough, and there was a, there was a measured bet that that would be enough. Hence, the Chief Medical Officer making recommendations to the Prime Minister, we need to accelerate the booster programme. So the booster programme has been running since October 21, a really quite rapid rate actually, it's been going really, really quickly, but the, the, the call in the two weeks running up to Christmas and the week between Christmas and New Year, and this is still going on, was accelerate the booster please. This is the number of doses given per day over in the period in the run-up to Christmas, and that's exponential growth. The effort to make that massive jump in the number of boosters given was unprecedented and credit to all those who made that happen because it definitely didn't happen by magic. It happened because a lot of people gave a lot of time and worked between Christmas and New Year and worked nearly all the hours God sends to make that happen. That will have undoubtedly saved lives and spared lots of people from very, very serious illness. So I think I'm particularly thankful for the efforts put in by many, particularly the NHS, but also many local authority employees and many, many, many people who are community and faith leaders and work in community voluntary sector organisations, they collectively made that happen and that does matter, really, really matter. So, so that little blip in the chart there actually looks like that, and that's a huge growth in the acceleration of the booster programme. Not peculiar, Sheffield, it happened everywhere up and down the country, but I'm talking about Sheffield here and that did make a difference. And 10 things that concern me today, testing, been a huge problem over the Christmas and New Year period, a massive spike in the number of people poorly, massive spike in demand for both lateral flow device tests and primary care, PCR tests. That is beginning to ease, I don't think we're quite out of the woods yet, and it's quite fragile, but the logistics and the supply chain were one of the rate-limiting steps, particularly with regard to lateral flow device tests, and the lab capacity was the other one, which was obviously particularly pertinent to PCRs, and that's beginning to ease, but there were significant problems over Christmas, New Year period and into the New Year. I'm not clear on what the government's long-term strategy with regard to testing is, and that's, that's an ask of the next couple of, couple of weeks to couple of months of government. Our support of the vaccination programme remains undimmed and will remain undimmed until the bitter end. You'll be aware that it's funded through the Containment Outbreak Management Fund, which is a fund made available by governments to local authorities to support all aspects of the Covid response, the one that we would, we would support until the bitter end, until there is zero money left in the COF grant, would be the support of the vaccination programme. Impact of the virus is a massive issue at the moment. The business continuity of many services where in a context with very, very high case rates is a big deal. We, we know that, very publicly reported on for NHS and social care, but anyone running a business, they're going to have people off poorly and they're going to have people at home isolating, that's going to be a problem, and that will be something that we'll need to deal with for the, probably the next month or so. That plays out with regard to schools, government and me, for what it's worth, I'm absolutely clear that face-to-face education is, is, is very, very important and education has been disrupted and that will have, that will have consequences that we'll deal with in years to come. But high case rates mean a lot of kids off poorly, will mean a lot of teachers off poorly, and that will come, that will come with some disruption to school. Unsustainable pressure on NHS and social care, and I unashamedly add in NHS and social care, and by NHS I also mean primary care, I've talked about that a lot, the pressure in all bits of the NHS and all bits of social care, on account of the managing the illness caused by Covid is significant with less staff, and that inevitably will have consequences in terms of delayed care, and that, that comes with, that will come with consequences. Again, most obviously, access to elective care and waiting lists, but any aspect of any healthcare, people's care is being delayed. There's a steepening rise in the over 65 population with Covid and that is a concern, I've talked about that, so I won't dwell on that anymore. Ditto the 100,000 people plus who aren't vaccinated, about 20, 22% of people aged 12 or more in Sheffield care homes, there are lots of cases at the moment, significant number of homes with outbreaks. Omicron is spectacularly transmissible, it's going to get everywhere. Not as much harm by a long stretch as we've seen in previous waves, it's a very, very well-boosted population, so, so we're seeing lots of people with really very mild illness, very few but not no hospitalisations, so, so not as much harm as we have seen. Coverage of the booster in the care sector, sorry, in employees in the care sector is a thing that we will keep coming back to because there's more to do there. Sheffield isn't London, Sheffield is about two weeks behind London, there or thereabouts, but it's not London, the population is different, the shape and timing and nature of the curve is different, so the, probably the worst was done in London by the time Christmas arrived, we had Christmas to add into that, and that will have an impact for us. And the shape and, shape and nature of healthcare services in London versus Sheffield is, is a little bit different. Sheffield is well-served, well-served by health, by excellent healthcare, as is the whole of the country, to be honest, but what would concern me more is a very, very rural area without, with, with longer, longer geographic access to, to healthcare. The future, nearly done, very unpredictable, we all want normal back, I want normal back, I'm bluntly sick of Covid, however, I don't get to decide when that happens sadly, and so there'll be, the, the, when does normal return will be a judgement made on the basis of the impact of the virus. You know, population immunity rates will play a big, big part in that because that's significantly reducing the impact of the virus versus an artificially imposed endpoint. And sadly for all of us, I think we will be in some form of adaption and or living, living with, and quite what that means requires perhaps a little bit of definition, we may discuss that in just a second. Last two slides, why should I bother? This is a mild illness, it is a mild illness, milder does not mean mild, it's still hospitalising hundreds of people a week, and those that don't get hospitalized, there are still plenty of people who are really, really poorly actually. Long Covid is a concern, has been a concern of mine throughout, the, the case rates at the moment will be creating more long Covid, that's a, that's a disability that will have a bearing on obviously NHS and social care demand, but will also have an impact on sort of economic productivity, people's ability to work, and that will be unequally spread, sadly. It might be mild for you, but the change of transmission and protecting vulnerable remains important. So those are the individual reasons why I should bother, the wider reasons, hospitals and the NHS and social care system are exceptionally busy, exceptionally busy, many hospitals have declared black alerts, that has consequence in terms of delayed and displaced care, with that will come with consequence that we will deal with in the months and years to come. Business continuity, if services are closing, then we're just going to not, not have services available if places are closed because all of the staff are isolating. And obviously, I've said it before, I'll say it again, the more cases there are, the more chances there is for variants. Omicron, all of the variants have been significantly more, significantly more significant, significantly more impactful than the original Wuhan strain. Obviously, what's changed is the availability of vaccination, but Omicron has, has had a significant impact. Imagine, imagine where you've got a scenario which is significantly more transmissible and significantly more pathogenic and significant vaccine escape, and we've had vaccine escape with, with Omicron, we might have, that we may not be, we may be in a worse position in the future. Lastly, the government's strategy, our local response is continuing as it always had, and all of the machinery for that is in place. It's all funded by the Containment Outbreak Management Fund or COF as we call it, up to the end of the financial year. I do not know what the government's intentions are beyond the end of the financial year. We're beginning to, and I've certainly seen it play out in other parts of the country, staff are leaving, the staff that are running that, that response, they're leaving because they've got mortgages to pay, mouths to feed, children to feed, et cetera. So that will, hasn't yet become an issue for us, but it could become an issue for us soon, so the sooner we get clarity from government, the better on that one. I think the government's strategy, for what it's worth, seems unlikely to change. Arguably, it's overly reliant on vaccine alone, I think we should be in a vaccine plus strategy, which we're trying to. That said, vaccine alone will protect us from severe illness and has happened, but the, the, the number of cases alone is putting unsustainable pressure on the NHS and social care system, not only hospital, as I'll say. High numbers, long Covid I've talked about, shorter, short term, that's going to be, high numbers are going to be business continuity issues and long-term, the long Covid will cause social, economic and NHS and social care issues. All that said, we do need to engineer the exit strategy from Covid, and the exit strategy should be driven by virus harm and the point at which you get an endemic disease which is manageable versus wide indeed. There's, there's some conversations to have about risk tolerance. We, we, we manage flu as an endemic illness, it still kills 30,000 people in, in a bad year, but, but we don't have the same response to flu as we've had for Covid, so there's some societal judgements that need to be made in that space. In the interest of time, Chair, I'm going to stop sharing there and ask Anthony to pick up any critical things that I missed off.
Thanks, Greg. Hello, everybody. I, I don't want to add too much again for the interest of time, and I've seen Greg's slide in advance, the, I think I just wanted to reiterate that, that point at the beginning, that case level, case levels are the highest they have been, the number of people infected at any one time is the highest it has ever been, the number of people being infected every week is still the highest it has ever been. Hospitalisation rates remain very high, more than half of those are over 80, and I think that's an important point because those people are more likely to need aftercare and social care post-admission, and therefore the impact of Covid on workplace absence in the social care sector becomes huge, adds to the delay, delay transfer of care, which means that there are no beds left in the hospital, which affects 999 services and so on and so on and so on. So it has, this, this so-called milder virus is actually in some ways much more impactful on the services we use every day than, than, than the previous versions just by volume. The, the high rates of staff absence I just touched on, obviously, there's been huge high rates of staff absence within the hospitals and within the other healthcare trusts, but it has a much bigger effect on primary care because we're smaller business units, you may only on, on any given day be using a very small number of receptionists depending on the practice, and actually, if a good chunk of your receptionists are isolating for one reason or another, your ability your ability to answer the phones even becomes hugely impacted. And those are the sort of things, not only that, but also clinical staff being off that actually impact on people's ability to access care on a day to day basis when they're poorly themselves. Having said that, general practice does what it does. It pulls up its socks and tries to struggle on and continues to provide a service on a day to day basis. And I just wanted again to reiterate what Greg said about the, the huge effort in the two weeks before Christmas on vaccinations. Everyone really just went to full on war mode and got everybody working day, day, extra days, evenings, weekends, providing these huge vaccination sites that we have, working out of each primary care network area. We also have other vaccination sites and mass vaccination sites and walk in vaccination sites around the city and pharmacy colleagues doing vaccinations on a daily basis. But the bulk, that big surge was provided by general practice staff from those vaccination sites in, in, in those primary care network hubs. And why, and that's been true throughout the vaccination programme. And if I was asked the question, why have we done better at that than perhaps some other areas? I think I would highlight the fact that we had our groups of practices working together for two to three years as what we called neighbourhoods as a joint CCG council project, long before the absence of the primary, the advent of the primary care network contract that bound those groups of practices together in an NHS contract. And I think that's paid dividends is that the joint work was there that allowed them to, to, to work really, really well together right from the outset. And we worked, set up these very efficient vaccination hubs that have been serving the population. As Greg said, lots and lots of support from charitable sector, from volunteers that made it all work. The, and then the only other thing is the, the unmet need, the population that are not getting vaccinated. As Greg said, it's following socio economic and ethnic lines. That's a huge worry. It, it's exactly the same areas that you see all of the, on the, on the other deprivation maps that you'd imagine where the vaccination is not as high. We've been targeting those areas from the outset. It's still an issue. And we will not stop. I think we will continue to try and promote vaccination uptake in those areas as best we can, all the way through. And then the, the only other thing I was going to mention about the vaccination uptake post Christmas as we go through January and the next few weeks, just to highlight that we, we may well not see high levels of booster vaccination and vaccination uptake through January. Because people are required to have at least, leave at least four weeks following their, their, their infection with Covid before they can have their vaccination. That's for adults. It's, 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 it's three months for, for, for the children, for teenagers. So the, that will inevitably mean a delay for all that big spike of people who've had it before they can actually have their first, second or booster vaccinations, depending on where they are. So I think that the good work we did before Christmas on vaccination, that was the window. That's when we had to do it. That's the difference that will actually have saved some lives. Now we're into an awkward period where we're, we're trying to mop up and there's going to be a cohort of people that can't have their vaccination. So we'll just have to be a bit patient on that one. And then finally, long Covid Greg touched on, massive concern, that many cases. We don't know whether Omicron produces long Covid as well as Alpha and Delta did. But that will produce a huge burden on employment, on the health services, on care, on benefits and so on. If, if you've got a large numbers of people who are made chronically unwell and unable to work. That's it for me.
Thank you for that, Anthony and Greg. I've got some names. First of all, councillor Otten, what, what's your point of order please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It was just that the, the, a couple of members' group did agree to make this an online video thing. But the point was, I certainly made the point that we should be taking public questions at, at this event. And nobody disagreed with that. So I was astonished to see that we weren't going to take public questions as a council at this event. It seems to me that though it may not be compulsory, it's certainly legal for us to do so. And so I just wanted to say it's under protest that we're not, that this is just a briefing and not a, not a meeting at which members of the public can put questions to the council.
Thank you councillor Otten. Thank you. I'm going, you were the first to ask a question, so you may do that now.
Oh, thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes. So I remember Greg, thank, thank you Greg and Anthony for your presentation. I remember you coming to the council a little under two years ago and explaining to us that, you know, that, that the spread of Covid couldn't be prevented. And the job was going to be, the strategy was going to be to flatten the curve so that, you know, the, the burden on the NHS at any one point in time was not overwhelming, that people were not dying for, for lack of care. And at the time, that was the strategy that seemed to be, seemed to be coming from public health people all over the country. That was just before anybody mentioned herd immunity or anything like that. Now subsequently, obviously it turned out that the burden would have been much higher on the NHS and the people would have been dying for lack of care and that we had to have lockdowns and.
Have you got a question councillor?
Well, the question is, are we, are we now back to, to, to the original, the original Plan A from two years ago? We are, we're not trying to prevent, we can't prevent the spread of this. We are just slowing it down and flattening the curve. And if that is the strategy, I mean, right or wrong, can Sheffield do anything about that and do anything differently? Is there any point of trying to do anything differently to that strategy? Or are we, or do we have to go along with it and embrace it? And therefore, you know, do we, is there a change to what we, apart from the obvious mitigations we should all still be taking? Is, is there a change to, to what we ought to be doing in terms of, in terms of accepting a certain amount of contact and a certain amount of, you know, resuming council meetings?
Thank you councillor Otten. Greg?
So the, the difference between then, then, yes, is broadly the answer to the question. The difference between then and now is that there's a very, very high degree of vaccine induced immunity. And the vaccine induced immunity does seem to induce a stronger immune response. So that's clearly good. That's protected. That has and will continue to protect people. For how long that is, remains to be seen, but probably lo- longer than the antibody response people would tell you. And that's because of T cells. The T cell response seems to be quite a long, long lasting, durable response. We don't know how this plays out to, to be honest, but we've got a scenario where we've got a very good level of immune response. However, we've got a scenario where there's a very, 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 very transmissible virus, as can be perfectly apparent with the case numbers. By the time you find you've got it and get a test and a test result and then the contact races contact you, most of the damage is actually done in terms of onward infection. So I do think we're in a scenario whereby we have all of the basic public health tools, but they are less effective than they were, certainly against Wuhan strain or whatever we happen to call the Wuhan strain now and the other variants. So I, so I, so I think we're going to be in a scenario where the effectiveness of the traditional public health tools is less than it was. And, but as Anthony and I both said, the sheer number is putting unsustainable pressure on NHS and social care. That in itself has consequences, never mind the people that are made poorly. So if I had to call it, I, and this is a guess, to hold me to it in a few months' time. I think this, the Omicron wave will be a relatively short, but very brutal wave. Will subside relatively quickly, but the, the consequences of it will be with us for some time to come. I think we'll have a reasonably quiet spring, summer, possibly early autumn. I've seen plenty of people predict it may all kick off again next winter. So that's broadly about where we are, but I do think we, there's not a lot that we can do to stop the Omicron wave now. Again, my view and I have no basis, no real evidential basis to say this, but even a full lockdown might not have stopped the Omicron wave. You know, we've seen the countries, the, the, the countries that have done exceptionally well today. So Australia, New Zealand, South, so many countries in South East Asia being opposed to, opposed to children. Omicron's taking off just there like it is here. So, and they, they, to be fair, have lower boost coverage than we have in this country. We do stand out in this country. So the short answer to your relatively short question was, to an extent, we have to bear this.
Thank you. Councillor Grokot?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you Greg and Anthony for, for the update. It was really helpful and concise as always, and we do appreciate that. My question comes on the back of a local free newspaper which dropped through my door this morning with a very large headline from someone who is not a medical professional, who is talking about the case for vaccinating children, having never been clear that children are at extremely low risk and is calling for the JVCI to review whether or not children should be vaccinated. My concern is obviously, where does this leave us? Because people who may today be going out to get their children vaccinated, maybe looking at this article and wondering what to do. It's mentioned in there that the chief medical officer said last September that the benefits of getting children vaccinated were marginal. So there is quite a case there for people not to engage in getting children vaccinated. So my question is, what would your position be? And how, what is the benefit of children receiving the vaccine or not based on this information that is now certainly circulating around the north of Sheffield? Thank you.
As, as a, as a jobbing clinician with a particular interest in this, I'll let Anthony go first, I think.
Okay, you can be one wingman on this because you can, you'll probably want to add something. Obviously, the JCVI look at these things all the time, continuously look at the, the developing evidence. So I'm sure when, if the case becomes evident that under, under twelve was effectively need vaccination, the group that currently don't qualify for vaccination, that they would recommend that quickly. As you quite correctly say, the, the, the amount of serious illness in children generally and under eighteen in fact, but certainly in under twelves is a very, very, very low number, extremely low number. So the, the argument for vaccinating the under twelves would not be to protect them. It would be to protect other people around them in terms of preventing spread. Now that's not an impossible thing to do. It's an interesting ethical question, whether it's the right thing to do to vaccinate children with their parents' consent when the children are not going to benefit particularly. The, some scare stories went around about harm from vaccinating children, particularly the teenagers. That was statistically speaking, a scare story. The, the amount of real harm was, was virtually nil. The, I would say not at this point. I don't think the argument is, is, is made that the under twelve should be vaccinated. The numbers in Sheffield Children's Hospital, which of course serves a wider area than just Sheffield, are still very low. There are ten children in Sheffield Children's Hospital with Covid and three with a post Covid syndrome called PIMs. That's it. Across the whole, whole regional area that Sheffield Children's Hospital serves, compared to the hundreds admitted every week to the Northern General as adults. So, and the, the amount of those children coming, coming to harm is, 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 you know, as, as close to zero as it's possible to get. So I don't think the case is made. I will defer to the director of public health for what he wants to add on.
Thanks. I would broadly follow the recommendations of JCVI as and when they, as and when they come. I understand JCVI are moving in that direction, but that's their, their call, not mine. I don't know when that will happen. A few, a few additional observations. UK is behind almost most, almost all of the rest of the world. But almost certainly all the rest of the Western and developed world with regards to the recommendation for vaccinating twelve to seventeen and also the recommendation for vaccinating five, five to eleven year olds. Most countries in the world have gone with it actually. I think there are relatively few that are recommended against it. There, there is an increase in serious illness in children. That's a function of the numbers. They're just the numbers of people affected will lead to an increase in, increase in illness. The, nothing that's not to do with the intrinsic nature of the virus, it's just to do with numbers being affected. There is actually a benefit in terms of reduced transmission from being vaccinated. Doesn't prevent transmission, it reduces it. I can't remember the numbers offhand, but I think with Omicron, it reduces transmission by about thirty to forty per cent. And over a big cohort of population, that does make a difference. Obviously, the thing that swung it with regards to twelve to the old, the older children was the reduced transmission and that buys you more time in school. We've disrupted children's education enough, so anything we can do, do to buy more time in school would, would, would swing it. And there is a reduction in transmission as well. So obviously a reduction in ser- serious illness, which is very, very rare as, as, as we know. The, 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 the basic question is, kids are going to get Covid. Or unvaccinated kids are going to get Covid, almost inevitable. They're the last group that haven't been vaccinated en masse. So does the risk of illness, is it more or less than the risk of vaccination against illness, which reduces your chance of getting illness and certainly reduces your chance of serious illness should you get, should you become infected? My, my read of the evidence is that the risk of vaccination is way less than the risk of illness. And, and I, I would recommend, not my, not my call to recommend, but I would recommend vaccinating younger children. But you can see Anthony and I have slightly different views and it's important that people hear that there are differences in views and opinion. How, all that. And the, the one thing I will dwell on in terms of the, the risks from vaccination, myocarditis, which is inflammation, inflammation around the heart, is the key risk that's been, that's been, that's been cited by lots. And so it, it does happen. It's vanishingly rare myocarditis following, following vaccination, vanishingly rare. Of, of that that does happen, almost all mild, self limiting and almost all resolved. Myocarditis is sixteen times more common from having had Covid than it is from vaccination against Covid. And obviously vaccination against Covid significantly reduces your chance of getting Covid. So, so my, my sense is that JCVI will recommend vaccinating five to eleven year olds. I don't know when that will happen, but JCVI is behind the rest of the world in that respect. And for what it's worth, I, I would make the recommendation, but it's not my recommendation to make.
Thank you Greg and Anthony. Councillor Argenzio please. Would you ask your question? And can I please remind councillors to be quick, quicker in asking the questions than more people can get to us?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you Greg and Anthony for your presentations. My question is about messaging and about balancing how infectious the Omicron variant is, but at the, at the same time also supporting those businesses, in particular entertainment theatres, cinema theatres, music venues, et cetera, that have really, really suffered for a very long time and don't have as much support as other businesses because they might be, you know, disconnected from being able to apply for, for things. So how do we encourage people to support those, those businesses? And at the same time, ask them to be really careful, taking into account how, you know, messed up the messaging from central government is for, you know, a lack of a more polite way of putting it out there.
Thanks councillor Argenzio. So I'm, I'm not sure on the how. Other than it is finely balanced, there's probably a message that, that, that we should all take on the support your local businesses. We all know the Sheffield economy matters and we all know that it's struggling. So if you were faced with the choice of going to the cinema in Sheffield or going to the cinema in a, another town, and I won't pick on, I won't pick on the little town, pick a cinema, pick a Sheffield cinema, ditto a theatre, ditto a hospitality venue. All of them, all, all of them come with some risk. Maybe it then also depends on the, the, who's going, are they well vaccinated? What risk, what risk appetite do they have? We're seeing that people who are fully boosted are still able to be infected but have a mild illness. So I'm, I'm not sure that I could invent and I'd probably be low to try and invent now or sort of root through that one other than it's finely balanced and social and economic harm that comes from businesses not being able to pay their staff and kind of going under matters and matters a lot. So I think that I'm increasingly of the view that we'll get to a stage where once we've got a fairly well vaccinated population and we're kind of there now, notwithstanding a hundred or so thousand that haven't yet had the dose one and dose two. You get to a stage where you just have to, you just have to make personal decisions about where, where, where you want to go and what you want to do. But I would in all of that, I'd support the local business angle because that does matter and we can do that collectively. Sorry, a bit of a fudged answer councillor Argenzio.
Thank you. Councillor McRooney?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you very much. I've got, Mike, one, one of the questions is, and this is an opinion, I suppose. Do you think that we often change, chop and change the rules and regulations about we can, what we can and cannot do? too quickly, given that it seems to me that sometimes we get two or three days or maybe a week of decent figures in terms of reduction and then everybody goes daft and changes all the rules. And we eventually end up back where we started from. What are the signs of the Omicron? Because I was absolutely clear about what the signs were to look for with the other variants, but I'm not sure what they are for this one. The other is, oh, do you think we're having a deep and long enough debate about the harm and cancellation of other operations and other treatments are going to people? As opposed to for cancer treatment or that? Do you think there's a proper debate being taken place about prioritising Covid? And my last one is, I had my second jab in April. In August, I caught Covid. I've had a booster since, but my fear is I don't know how long that booster is going to last. So are we talking potentially of having, you know, boosters for everybody every six months or so? I just wondered what your opinions are on those. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Rooney. So in reverse order, the booster and frequency of further injections, we genuinely don't know. I think the likely worst case scenario would be an annual vaccination as per flu for those eligible for flu, probably given at the same time, just for operational ease. But no one actually knows how long immunity from vaccination against this strain or another future strain of Covid may last. So that's science that's developing fairly live and fairly rapidly, actually. So no one genuinely knows. On the question of displaced care, and are we giving enough emphasis and the reason to debate that? No, is the short answer. One of the things that worries us all is the consequences of delayed and displaced care. That will have an impact for months and years to come, I suspect. Most obviously and visibly, look at elective waiting lists in hospitals up and down the country. This hospital is no different. But equally, the consequences of care that hasn't been able to have been given in primary care will have an impact and we will have to work out the consequences of that fairly live over a period. On that one, it's worth dwelling on, and I may try and find it if I can and put it in the chat, the input that Chief Medical Officer did to, I think, the Health Select Committee when asked a question on displaced care. And to paraphrase, and I may get slightly wrong, his response was along the lines of, the NHS does what it does best. It prioritises urgent and pressing care that happens to be in front of it at that time. If we had neglected Covid, we didn't have any choice but to put all of our energy into the Covid response. If we had neglected Covid, the NHS and social care system would have been very, very, very overrun, as did happen in lots of countries up and down the world. And that has very immediate consequences. So yes, the displaced care and the delayed care matters. But there was really no option other than to focus our energy on the response to Covid at that particular time and arguably still now. But it's not, that is not important. It is important, but you're right, we don't put enough time and energy into a reasoned debate about some of that stuff. On symptoms, I'll hand over to Dr Gore, who is a jobbing clinician, so he will be able to tell you a real live question. And on the frequency of rule changes, arguably, yeah, probably a little bit too frequently. I hope councillors will be satisfied that in Sheffield, we've tried to stick to a sort of the core points, the core points and the core basics of how to prevent and or reduce transmission, rather than an ever-changing, ever-evolving set of rules, which are largely based on the core set of principles. Because very few people have read page 674 of the guidance. The core principles have been pretty much constant throughout. So in Sheffield, we've tried to focus on the core principles. And so they cut to the basics all the time. But not always successfully, I might add. And lots of people do want to know what it says on page 674 of the guidance. And the only standard answer is, I don't know. So we've tried to stick to the core principles, but yeah, we have arguably chopped and changed nationally a bit too often. If I hand over to Anthony to talk about what the symptoms actually look like in clinical practice, he'd do a better answer than me.
Yeah, and the, thanks Greg. We already knew with Delta that it was moving away from those classical symptoms as described with Covid originally, you know, the loss of smell and the dry cough. We already knew there was more variation in symptoms. And then as we increasingly got a population that was double vaccinated or had natural immunity because they'd had it like yourself councillor Rooney, and now with a boosted population. If individuals who are very heavily vaccinated or have got some immunity catch Covid, their symptoms are even more likely to be less than the described typical of Covid. And then with Omicron, we know even more so that it doesn't display those classical symptoms that we originally all got drilled into us right at the very beginning about loss of smell and dry cough and high fever. You might not get those, yeah? And I think that's a very important message. And I think that's one of the things that perhaps has got through, that people are, is driving the high demand on PCR testing. But also, as a jobbing GP, I know lots of people ring the surgery every day and say they've had cough and a cold for a few days and they want to be seen. And I go, have you done a Covid test? And they go, no. Why not? How do we know if it's Covid otherwise? And that is still a big issue, that the messaging on that is not crystal clear, that those original classic symptoms as described, you might not get those now. It's increasingly more difficult to tell between a bad cold and cough and Covid in someone who's got some immunity, either because they've had it before or because they're well vaccinated. And it is an issue. And it's an infection control issue day to day in outpatient departments, in GP practices, on hospital wards, because the only way you can know for sure is a PCR test. On the other thing you mentioned councillor Rooney, the NHS has been very, very clear that it has to continue to prioritise important diagnostic testing, including for cancer and other serious illness, and then not to be stopped anymore like they were in the first wave of Covid. And I think that's right. I think an awful lot of there'll be an awful lot of suffering, if you like, for a number of years from all of the elective surgery that Greg referred to. An awful lot of orthopaedic surgery will take years to catch up on. That's an awful lot of people who will be partially disabled or in pain that will be in constant contact with their GP. So it will create an awful lot of unwellness, an awful lot of activity in the NHS, just having those long waiting lists again that we'd hope we'd never see again. But in terms of the more dramatic harm on cancer waits and things like that, a lot of that has been partially recovered and everyone's determined not to allow that to slip again. And certainly Sheffield is no worse than anyone else on that front. You know, in many cases, a lot better than some other areas in terms of cancer performance. But it has been affected by Covid and it continues to be.
Thank you. councillor Anders Sanger.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Happy New Year, everybody. Thank you to Greg and Anthony. I'm on day 18 of Omicron. And for me, it was very much three days of a cold like symptom. But I, because of my severe asthma, I reckon I've still got another two weeks before I could stand up in front of a class and teach or, you know, or go on stage as an actor, those sort of jobs. So I would still be disabled for several weeks. And I got Omicron seven weeks after my booster. So I think my question really is about, I've got two questions. One is about the 22% of the 12 who haven't yet been vaccinated. And we're not talking about the refuse nicks, we're talking about the ones who have been hesitant. And Greg said, you know, we're doing better than the other core cities, but we've still got to keep pushing. Because, you know, for people who are not vaccinated at all, particularly older people or people with underlying health issues, they can still get a very severe illness. So what more can we do in terms of keeping going with the vaccination programme? So I've had a flu jab for 22 years. I'm fully expecting to have a Covid jab for next, every year for the next X number of years. I think that's just the only way we're going to get out of this. And I think the other thing to say, as somebody who's, you know, because all three of us in the House got it, and because my wife is in the NHS, we had access to PCR and lateral flow tests. And clearly, my son and wife were advised to take lateral flow tests on days six and seven to allow them to go back to work on day eight. And they were still very positive on lateral flow tests on day seven. And even on day nine, all three of us were still positive. And yet, the two of them were completely well. So I don't see how people can be saying that isolation should be moved down to five days, because if the lateral flow test is the test, then we were still positive on day nine. And I'm sure that applies to lots of people who had got over the illness. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thanks councillor Sanger. Again, I'll start and I'll let Anthony pick up. So in order, the as yet unvaccinated, as I say, it's hard to know what we could be doing that we aren't doing. Three broad areas. One is the, do we know who they are? Are we able to kind of identify them patient by patient, cohort by cohort? And yet, yes is the answer to that one. Certainly, the primary care networks have a pretty good handle on who they are and have invited them frequently. Secondly, is it accessible? So you remember the very, very early phases of the vaccination programme, there was a giant mass vaccination centre at the arena, which is great if you live close to the arena, but it's not much use if you live in the depths of Fulham and you'd need three buses to get there. So fairly quickly after that, primary care networks came on stream and provided much more locally accessible vaccination. After that, we then got into pop-up clinics in all sorts of places, in mosques and community centres. To a certain extent, and we'll go a little bit more down this path, on the bus, we have a Covid bus for Sheffield and it roams around various parts of town and will be vaccinating. So making it as accessible, making it as accessible as possible has been a strategy and will continue to be a strategy. And the third one is openly and honestly talking to people where they have fears, people have legitimate fears, and just openly and honestly talking to people. The commonly occurring fears are, it can't be safe, it was developed so quickly. How can that be possible to be a safe vaccine? And there's a reason for that.
Richard Dimon.
And the second fear that I hear most frequently is that this is a vaccine that will affect my fertility. Wrong. There's zero evidence on that one. And just talking to people in groups or one-to-one in any way, shape or form, we've done a lot with faith and community leaders. I know clinicians up and down the city have done a huge amount talking to people in groups of one-to-one. That's the path that we'll take and I think we'll continue to take. I do not, almost as a rule, engage with those who are anti-vax because it creates publicity. People get more confused in the publicity and that people will come to harm. There are people who are willfully spreading misinformation about vaccine and its impact. That has and will cost lives and there will be no accountability for that sadly. But I will not engage with that because it's just a strategy I know from bitter experience that doesn't end well. The second question on the isolation period. I think I fully support the isolation period of seven days with two negative lateral flow devices, aka the current policy. The evidence is pretty clear that seven days plus negative test on day six, negative test on day seven is equivalent in terms of knock-on transmission to 10 days of isolation, then you're released on Clink, from the Clink, so to speak. I wouldn't go to five days. That would be a call that the Prime Minister will have to make based on the available evidence at the time. I would guess that CMO is providing that evidence probably right now. But until CMO has been into that space, it wouldn't be a space I would go there. I'm not quite sure the science supports a five-day isolation period.
Just on that councillor Sanger, you know, we know how infectious Omicron is, super infectious. It has high viral loads from the very beginning that potentially go on for a higher level for longer. It's infectious for longer as well as, you know, so it makes no sense to go to five days. You'll catch more people still being infectious when they go out. And in fact, the guidance for health and care workers is now that they potentially need to isolate and only go out on day 15 if their lateral flow test remains positive. If it turns negative, of course, as we said, that they can go out. But then now in a position where they're potentially 14 days isolation, if you work in health and care, because you may be meeting vulnerable people and people that you definitely don't want to spread it to. So your instinct is right that that would be a major worry.
Thank you. councillor Milson, ask your question, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you. And thank you to Greg and Anthony for persisting in answering all the questions and for the presentation. My question is about delivery of third primary vaccine doses to at-risk cohort. And it's a subject that we touched on back in November, I think, at another briefing. And we identified a problem there that that cohort weren't necessarily being identified swiftly and correctly. And it wasn't the same system as the first time around when the vaccines first were rolled out. And it wasn't the same system as when the at-risk groups were identified at the very start of Covid. So I'm asking, can we be confident now that those at greater risk have been identified for that third primary dose successfully? So I'm following up on what we discussed a couple of months ago. And can we be confident that those people will also be called for a booster at the right time? As their third primary dose will presumably still require a booster. At least that's what was being said last November. And so essentially, is there now a robust local system for identification and management of that at-risk cohort? Thank you.
councillor Milson, when all that stuff gets announced, I can assure you from a jobbing GP's point of view, it's an absolute nightmare. Because they do national searches of the coding in our records and come up with total nonsense. And then loads of people get told they're at risk and they need this third primary jab. And it's a complete surprise to them. And then, of course, they go, oh, we've got it wrong. So then they go and ask the hospital consultants to produce lists, which is a completely different list, which creates even more confusion and so on and so on. I'm not sure that local is necessary. Well, they need to have a system that works everywhere. So I think that the idea that they can interrogate electronically the records for who's clinically vulnerable and contact them all direct is the correct way of doing it. They simply manage and conspire to get it wrong every time. And then we have to sort it out and mop it up and reassure people they don't need it and so on and so on. So I'm hoping, because every time it happens, they get feedback and get told what's wrong with their searches and everything like that, that actually the next time they try and identify the cohorts, it will be done better. Can I give you a cast-iron guarantee right now?
Okay. It's now councillor Stephen Ayres.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Greg and to Anthony for the presentation. I just wanted to return back to the impact on, you know, within the usual annual scenario of winter pressures on hospital services. I just wondered, I mean, it had been said by Anthony, I think, earlier on that clearly hospital, normal hospital services are under additional pressure. I just wondered what measure we have to show just which way it's going. So my question was, what was the current ratio of Covid-related hospitalisation to non-Covid related hospitalisations? I just wondered where the trend is going. Are we, you know, are we coming out of that pressure or is it worsening or, you know, just wonder what the situation was?
Thanks councillor Ayres. It's a high level and slightly worsening, I think, if I had to simplify it most. From memory, the proportion of hospital beds with someone who has Covid in that bed is about 20% there or thereabouts. Remember, some of those will be in hospital because of something else and they all get tested. When people, patients all get tested when they go into hospital. So some will be with Covid, but a significant proportion will have been hospitalised because of Covid. And that trend is only going to go up, we don't know for how long, but the hospitalisation lags cases because you take a couple of days to become poorly, then you take a couple of days to get the test and test result. And the illness, probably the serious illness and then the hospitalisation lags cases. That and the 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 illness, probably the the serious illness and then the hospitalisation lags cases, the case rates by about a week to a fortnight or so. So I think that will get worse before it gets better sadly. But already, it's at a high and fairly unsustainable unsustainable level. And what, once again, remember, it's not just hospitals. We're concerned about the totality of NHS and social care system. The measurable bit is the 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 unit that is the hospital bed. But as as Anthony will say, primary care is exceptionally busy. It's just much harder to measure for all sorts of technical reasons. But I think we're not out of the woods by a long stretch.
But could I, sorry, Lord Mayor, could I just ask, how does that compare with the national trend? Is it about the same?
Slightly worse than national, but only just is probably about the same or or. So it's difficult to compare the the national trend because we're all at different stages of the epidemic curve. London is ahead of us and is probably beginning to come out of it. And different parts of the country are at different stages. And obviously, also, it's compounded by the 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 level of bed availability does vary from from place to place. There are more beds in Sheffield than the per capita than there are in other parts of the country. So it's difficult to draw a definitive conclusion. But if I had to, I'd say that Sheffield is about average in this respect and many other respects.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add is is that I'm not an expert on hospital bed management. But you can imagine if they got multiple wards dedicated to people who are positive with Covid and then they get a Covid positive case on a on a ward that was meant to be Covid negative, that effectively closes down that ward to new admissions for a while. And then they have to free up wards that should have been used for elective care and surgery for more medical cases. And this, to agree, this happens every winter. But Covid just exacerbates that because you're trying to separate out all the time. And it just means your bed management and your efficiency and the number of free beds you have at any one time that you can actually use is always less than you want. And that's what causes backing up into A and E and hospital and ambulance queues. And then affects ambulance response times and, you know, and that, this is the 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 sort of nightmare scenario of something that's so infectious. It has this knock-on effect down throughout the whole system. So it's not just about the beds, it's the knock-on effect throughout the entire system, both aftercare and social care, the front end in GP land and, you know, everything in between.
Thank you. Councillor Little, you asked two questions on the chat. Do you want to ask both those questions now, please?
Yes, the first question is about the Northern General Hospital and the Royal Harehamshire having poor ventilation on their wards. Is this being addressed or has it been addressed as an issue? And the other question is the availability in local pharmacists of rapid flow tests. I can't get them locally.
I think I can pick up both of those quickly, councillor Little. Firstly, on ventilation of both of the two mates, I don't know, is the honest answer. I think all big sight to doing all they can with regard to ventilation. But remember, there's a whole bunch of questions that are inherent to the building design in there. Where windows can be opened, they will be open. Where airflow can be found, can be achieved in certain ways, it will be being done. But some of it will be the inherent building design question. So and I don't know what more can and is being done. So I'll commit to providing with a follow-up answer on that one. With regard to lateral flow device testing, the level of demand on lateral flow device testing in the run-up to and over Christmas period was just unprecedented. We, Sheffield got to got to its critical reserve. And we were reserving what's up, we held as a local authority for essential frontline services, blue light services, NHS, social care, so that they could keep running for obvious and important reasons. That had a knock-on consequence on public availability of lateral flow device testing. I don't think that has quite eased yet. But I'm told that there are significant supplies being given to community pharmacies up and down the country, including Sheffield. Last I heard, which was yesterday, the general view, and I haven't got data to back up this view, is that the 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 supply for both the online channel, people ordering lateral flow device tests online and community pharmacies was significantly better than it has been. But again, I don't think it's quite resolved yet. And I think it's a little bit fragile. It's worth me saying, and I'll say on record, credit to all those who sorted out the logistics to to meet the massively increased demand for lateral flow device tests, not just locally but nationally. That's been a significant effort, but I don't think we're quite to the woods yet that it's better than it was. Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Councillor Marouf.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is a question, not from me, but a question that gets put to me, which is, does being vaccinated mean you're immunised against catching Covid? Or do you just get a mild form? I mean, this is a typical question that you get from people who don't actually want to get vaccinated. And my second question is, the new Cyprus findings of Delta Cron. Is that something that we need to be concerned about? Or are we going to get various different variants coming along and we we get frightened by each one of them that comes along? Thank you.
In 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 reverse order, there was an excellent comment on Delta Cron on the Science Media Centre yesterday. For those of you that don't know, Science Media Centre is one of the trade secrets. And where where stories are in the press, I always look to see what Science Media Centre have said. But the view from Science Media Centre with regard to Delta Cron is it was a lab error where samples have just become mixed in the lab somehow, rather than a brand-new strain and a brand-new variant. That said, there will be further mutations, you know, what we're on that Omicron. Will trans, will will mutate into something else. That's almost a biological certainty, quite when, how and what that will look like is anybody's guess. What we do when we run out of Greek alphabet letters to to call them, I don't know. There's not that many Greek alphabet letters left. So but it will mutate further. But Del- Delta Cron is almost certainly a lab error from what I can understand. On the question of vaccination and immunity, the 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 vaccine is hugely more effective than I had dared hope for a year ago, by by many orders of magnitude. I'd hoped it would be effective, but it's played out way more positively than I had dared hope for. Way more effective than the flu vaccine is actually, in terms of reducing severe illness. It, until Omicron appeared, it was very effective, about 60% effective in terms of reducing transmission, the ability to acquire the virus. And somewhere in the order of 90% effective in terms of the ability to cause serious illness, most obviously measured by hospitalisation, illness bad enough to require hospital treatment. For for Omicron, it's been dented a little bit. So it's about 80 to 85% effective at reducing serious illness, hospitalisation. And I think it's about 50%, maybe a bit less effective in terms of the ability to catch the virus. 50% are still odds I would take, actually, and played out over a big population. 50% reduction is, it matters and matters a lot. So but it's not true to say that it's a 100% effective against catching the virus and or severe illness. No vaccine is, but this is an amazingly effective vaccine, all things considered. Hopefully, that helps clarify.
Thank you, Greg. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Jones, would you like to ask your question, please?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. One of the things I was wondering is, you were talking rightly about the impacts of Covid on other treatments, things like cancer and such like. Are you currently aware of the number of vacancies there are within Sheffield for cancer clinicians and specialists? What what is the strain on the system at the moment? And even if Covid wasn't an issue, do we feel that we've got a sufficient focus on this therapy going forward?
Go on, Anthony.
Well, I was gonna say, obviously, Sheffield is a cancer treatment centre. So it treats, depending exactly on the exact tumour site, it treats patients from all over either a subregion, just of South Yorkshire and Basildon, or sometimes even for some cancers, a much larger regional area, depending on the cancer. So we can't claim them as being Sheffield's cancer doctors all the time. But obviously, it's it's a it's a full cancer, you know, service. It involves radiographers and radiologists and pathologists, it's a full cancer team. Actually, it's much more nuanced than that. There are different gaps in different areas, in different tumours. So they may be short of a specialist pathologist for thyroid. I'm not saying that's the case, by the way, this is an example. And a pathologist for cervical, but not short of any surgeons anywhere, you know. So if you wanted a breakdown of that, we'd have to go to the Cancer Alliance for South Yorkshire and Basildon and ask them for a sort of breakdown of where all the gaps are. In terms of what I know off the top of my head, our biggest shortage is in oncologists. But that's not a South Yorkshire issue or Sheffield issue. That's a national issue, that the the major shortage area for cancer treatment is in oncology. And that's known about. And there's obviously efforts being made to try and recruit and to train more oncologists, as you'd expect. I don't have that fully answered your question.
Thank you. Councillor Diamond, would you like to ask your question, please?
Yeah, thank you, Greg and Anthony for the presentation and all the answers to the questions. My question is about Omicron and whether it is less severe when, in terms of illness compared to previous variants, even among unvaccinated people, or if there's evidence to show that. And secondly, do you think there is enough awareness among people of the pressures that the NHS is under currently? Or do you think this has not been, got enough attention?
Thanks, thanks, councillor Diamond. So in order, the general consensus is that in those that are unvaccinated, i.e. have seen no vaccine, Omicron is about as severe as Delta was. So on 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 average. And the reality is, many people will have mild illness and that's fine, that's lucky. But significant numbers didn't have a mild illness. So the question is, do we want to play the chance? And the 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 best chance of reducing severe illness is to is to be vaccinated. But mild, milder isn't necessarily mild. All the, all of these things are relative. And severe illness from Delta killed and hospitalized plenty. So the the best, the best route is still still being vaccinated. And milder doesn't necessarily mean mild. And the, as Anthony said, getting the messaging right on this has been proved difficult, actually, because we all want to hear it's mild and it is milder. But just the transmissibility turns into a game of numbers. There are significant numbers of people who've been made poorly. And then on the second question, mental block, sorry, just briefly touch on the second question again, sorry, I have mental block.
I just think, wondering if you thought there was enough awareness of the pressures that the NHS is under at the moment?
No, 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 probably not, is the answer. Certainly not with regard to pressure, there's not in the hospital. The hospital is the bit of the NHS that gets all the media reporting. It's impossible to understate the pressure within primary care and other bits of the NHS and social care, to be honest. And we only experience it for real when it's something that touches us or the lives of one of our loved ones. But and the reality is, that won't be for a great many people in Sheffield. Therefore, many people say, oh, it's not that bad, it can't be as bad as all of that. But it is, it's a significant, it's a significant and really quite exceptional strain and has been for many months now. And again, staff burnout is an issue, it's a very, very, very real issue. NHS and social care have been at the frontline of responding for as long as I have now, two years. And burnout is an issue, definitely. Anthony may add.
I just want to add that obviously, a lot of the NHS pressures pre-existed Covid. Covid simply exacerbated them. You know, we had shortages of GPs and issues with practice, some practices being less resilient than others. Anyway, you know, we had issues with certain hospitals in the country with their performance and their waiting lists anyway. You know, with, to a degree, that will always be the case. But Covid has exacerbated that. There's a tendency for the poorest areas, socio-economically and so on, to receive the worst deal. And that therefore gets exacerbated. They're the areas of highest demand, they're the areas with the highest number of Covid cases, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So all of these things tend to snowball under pressure. And 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 Covid has now provided, as Greg said, two years of extra pressure and people just being constantly on the treadmill. So where you've got services that are perhaps were already the least resilient, they are now the ones that are most at risk of falling over, whether that be a social care service or a charity or an individual GP practice in some cases.
Thank you. Councillor Ickbell, would you ask your question, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you for the presentation, Greg and Anthony. Two two quick questions. One, I I put on the the chat there was, and you've both touched upon it, deprived areas and obviously the correlation with the BAME areas as well. My ward, for example, it was just not looking for the figures today, but it'd be useful to to get the figures on vaccinations. And I remember on doors one and two, we ran some really good campaigns locally. But on the booster, I I've not really picked up anything. And if there's anything we can do to support the second vaccination, I mean, sorry, the first one, because you said there's still, it seems like 10% of the population isn't vaccinated. It'd be great if there's anything we can to do to support that. The second one is picking, very similar to what councillor Angela said. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank councillor Jane Dunne for writing to government regarding schools. My daughter says to me that it's absolutely freezing in the classroom because we've got to keep the windows open for circulation. They're not allowed to wear their coats and she's had a cold for the last two weeks. So it's brilliant that councillor Dunne has written in. Is there anything more that we can do to support the plight of schools? And what councillor Dunne has, what, you know, she's written on our behalf. So if there's anything we can do to support that position, because as we've been told, it's just going to get colder. And, you know, if it wasn't for having the lateral flow test on a regular basis, I'd have to keep her off school. But, you know, she she was saying, some of her classmates are in a similar position. But I have no idea if they are taking these lateral flow tests every morning. So it could just be the common cold like I've got, or it could be the the virus. Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Ickbell. And it's hard to know what more we could be doing on the ventilation point. The sort of the the purchase of 7,000 HEPA filters from governments put into schools with the poorest ventilation as measured by CO2 monitoring. Welcome, no doubts about the fact it's welcome, but 7,000 filters across 20,000 schools, each of which will have many, many rooms in. The maths don't quite help. There is more that we can do on ventilation. The the cheap and easy option is open doors and windows. But in winter, that's rather less attractive than it is in summer for all sorts of obvious reasons, as your daughter knows to her cost. Ventilation has made a difference, there's no two ways about that. Face mask, wearing face masks has made a difference, no two ways about that. And needs to be well-fitting, needs to be covering the nose, all of the the stuff that we've said many times over. Schools, to be fair to them, I think schools broadly know what they're doing now and they call us, they call my team, less and less and less. So hard to know what else we could be doing. There is more that we can and will do to push further on vaccination of the 12-plus-year-olds. Children's Hospital are about to, it might actually be this week, it might be rolling now, doing a round of visiting all schools again to do the to do the mop-up. That won't cover the five to elevens yet because we've not got to that cohort yet. It's tough to know what more we could be doing. And in all of this, the maintenance of education and the least disruption to education also matters. But but there will be some of that, just on account of the Covid rate as they are and the requirement to isolate. So there's no easy answers on that one sadly, and I wish I wish there were. But there's there's not a simple answer to that one to make it go away in the school-aged children sadly. So the 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 upside is that, as Anthony has said, the number of children that are made significantly poorly, certainly poorly enough to be in hospital, is vanishingly rare, just not in the same space as it is in older adults.
And in the absence of a, you know, magic money tree in Sheffield, I think all we can do is follow councillor Dunne and and lobby national for, you know, for funding, for for proper, you know, antimicrobial filtration in every classroom nationally. And I think that should be the case.
Thank you. Councillor Phipps, can you ask your question, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Greg and Anthony, for answering the questions. I'm just wondering, because we've mentioned boost-up programmes and rollouts a couple of times, and the potential of future ones has been mentioned. So do you think we need to be doing more as a country in vaccine solidarity? So helping other countries with first and second doses, instead of looking at the potential for future blanket booster rollouts? So this is following whose criticism? The wealthy countries can't boost their way out of the pandemic and the boost programmes are likely to prolong the pandemic. Thanks.
So thanks, councillor Phipps, global politics. So in short, yes. The the more that we can do as quickly as we can do to vaccinate the world, I forget the numbers offhand, but the vast majority of people across the world have not yet seen those one of those two. the vast majority of people across the world have not yet seen dose one or dose two, never mind on their third and and potential talk of some subsequent vaccines. Um, uh, it's worth me reiterating again that I I had mixed views on whether, but before we started the booster programme, I had mixed views on whether or not it was the right thing to do to implement a booster programme when significant parts of the world's population hadn't yet seen dose one and dose two. Um, um, the the science very clearly supported the booster programme. Um, and I I the way which we've done it has doubtless saved many lives and saved many people from hospitalisation. Um, but that it isn't to neglect the um, the the need to ensure that there is safe and sustainable supply of vaccine for the world, basically. Uh, there there's lots that pharma companies could be doing with regard to patents, for instance, that that would ease the production and manufacture a vaccine um, outside of a patented environment. And there's lots that the um, the um, the countries across the world could be doing to ensure their delivery system is as robust as ours, happens to be, and ours is very, very robust. Um, difficult for me to make a uh either or straight choice, because I don't think it is an either or straight choice. And uh, to to do so would be a political thing for me too, so I'd better steer clear of that.
Um, one of my uh GP clinical director colleagues at the CCG has a catchphrase where he goes, that's a both and. And I think this is a both and. I think, I don't think it's mutually exclusive. I think, you know, there are cohorts in this country that need a booster, as we've already discussed, we may need to start vaccinating five to twelve year olds. That's, that doesn't mean we can't have the political will nationally or, you know, to or or internationally even to um, go and vaccinate the rest of the world. And actually, that's, that's, that's actually, there's some self interest in that. The more we vaccinate the rest of the world, the the fewer new things post Omicron and the less chance that we run out of Greek letters.
Thank you. Can Counselor Davidson please ask his question?
Uh, thank you, Lord Mayor. Uh, it's, it's a question that perhaps is uh an annual one. But it's still, uh, it it's still an important one. Uh, and it men- it's, I, it's because of something that arose from what you, you were saying earlier. What is the the death rate uh at the moment uh, or in the last two years with Covid compared to that uh when we didn't have Covid? That's, that's the the first question.
Um, Counselor Davidson, all up to date, about fifteen hundred people have lost their lives to to Covid, where Covid is is mentioned on the debt, on the death certificate in some way, shape or form. Uh, that's over the the course of the pandemic. Um, so, so, all, all till the end of last year is about fourteen hundred, it's now on about fifteen hundred. Um, so, um, uh, and that will likely be, well, I hope it will be, a fairly short term um issue, that that has had a significant increase on the overall death rate, but that will probably be a fairly short term. And and as I say, I don't think we will see that many deaths from Omicron, because those that are most vulnerable are now well, 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 well vaccinated. So um, but but that fifteen hundred has definitely had an impact on the death rate. Um, and has definitely had an impact on life expectancy, which is a big deal. That's sort of a uh, there's a dip in life expectancy seen in Sheffield and every other town in every other town in the country. That will likely be a one, possibly two year thing. The bigger concern on life expectancy is that life expectancy improvements have now ground to a halt. Um, and at some point, I'll finalise the the annual DPH report, now it'll be one of the main headlines. Uh, so that's a, that's a long term trend. That's not a Covid trend, that's a long term trend. Uh, just to give you some comparison, so fifteen hundred people over the course of the pandemic have have lost their lives to Covid. Um, about a thousand people die every year because of smoking. Um, uh, this year, last year, next year, going down because smoking prevalence is going down, but um, smoking is the new smoking. Um, and the smoking isn't mentioned on death certificates, there's lung cancer that's mentioned on death certificates or stroke or heart attack or the things that smoking has as causes, but um, so the 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 principal causes of death um are the things that are fairly well trodden, they are um, well, fairly unchanging. Uh, and but but Covid has had an impact, definitely.
But if a person goes into hospital with, let's say, uh, cancer, uh, but then catches Covid, which is quite possible when they're in hospital, what are, what would their death be listed as?
Uh, maybe a question for Anthony, who's who'll assign more death certificates than I ever have, Anthony?
Uh, yeah, no, not as many as I used to. Um, the um, the uh, if they were in for routine cancer treatment, even even if it was effectively going to be terminal care eventually, if it wasn't done with curative intent. The, um, then undoubtedly if they catch an infection, whatever it may be in hospital and then subsequently die of it, that infection will be, will 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 go down as one A on the death certificate. If they were also seriously ill with another illness like cancer that contributed them to being being weaker, for example, and more um, uh, at risk of the infection, that may also appear on the death certificate under part two of the death certificate. Um, so, um, but in that scenario, there is no doubt if it was Covid they contracted and Covid they died from on in the hospital whilst undergoing cancer treatment, it should be one A Covid nineteen that is the um, the the main cause on the death certificate, and I believe that would be the case most of the time. As Greg's alluded to, this sort of surge in in excess deaths due to Covid will disappear when you look at a longer timeframe because it primarily affected um the elderly. So, uh, so if you look at average deaths over a five year or ten year period, it will, it will disappear. But when you look at the, you know, the one year or two year period, you can see those fifteen hundred extra deaths in the city really standing out in the way that Greg described.
One thing is clear is that um, some people become surrounded by people with Covid and not catch it. Is that due to genetics or is it the the lifestyle in which they live? You know, the food they eat and so on?
Uh, well, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I've had Covid in my house just before Christmas, my fifteen year old son caught it from his girlfriend. And um, and um, uh, nobody else came down with it. Um, so his uh, his twelve year old sister, who's only had one jab, didn't get it. Uh, his uh seventeen year old sister, um, who was ju- was just double jabbed, didn't get it, and both of his boosted parents didn't get it. So, um, I think, um, it may be that he had Delta, of course, which is slightly less transmittable, we were just lucky. Um, or in our particular cases, our immunity held up. And as Greg alluded to earlier, in terms of the 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 efficacy of the vaccination, um, if you are vaccinated, you are less likely to get it. The chances are it will work, it's just not a hundred percent. So so it it is just, in in those cases where someone has definitely been exposed to it, they're breathing in the same air in the same house and they don't get it. That's immunity, because we know that it's very, very infectious.
Okay, thank you.
So ju- just to add, I think with with Delta, the secondary transmission rate, i.e. if I if I get it, the 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 transmission to others, it was about thirty to forty percent of people in my immediate household will get it. With Omicron, it's about sixty to seventy percent. But that still means that four thirty to forty percent won't. Some of that will be immunity, but a lot of it will be just random chance. A lot of it will be people, other people in the household taking care and opening windows and using different towels in different rooms. A friend, a friend of mine had it just before Christmas. Um, he was basically banished the spare bedroom by his wife and uh, food was passed under the door and all sorts of, all sorts of emergency measures. His wife didn't get it, his wife was a GP and she didn't, she didn't get it. So you can take care. Um, and it's not guaranteed that everyone in the household will get it by 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 taking care. Um, it it's harder with Omicron, but it's still possible.
Thank you. Counselor Little, this will be your third question. If you've got any more, can you ask them now?
Yes, but this is, this is the final one. Is that, does the hundred thousand people in Sheffield not vaccinated, does this include twelve to fifteen year olds?
Uh, yeah, yes, Counselor Little, easy answer. It includes everyone over twelve, basically.
Thank you.
Um, the 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 group I'm most worried about are the forty five, fifty plus. Um, the, in terms of those who are most likely to be seriously impacted, I'm much, 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 much more worried about a forty seven year old bloke with type two diabetes and high high blood pressure than I am a very, very healthy twelve year old, because it's to do with the impact of the virus and the impact of the vaccine on on reducing the reducing serious illness. So but the direct answer to the question is that the hundred thousand does include everyone aged over twelve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, there are no more questions in the chat, so I'm going to take this opportunity to thank everyone for attending this meeting. Thank Greg for attending the meeting and Anthony, of course. It's been very useful information. Um, so I hope that council members and members of the Thank you for that. I hope that members of the council and members of the public observing the event found the briefing. Right, so I think someone in the group is pressing something. It's not us in the town hall. So I'll just move on to say thank you, uh, everyone for attending, and that concludes the business for today.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you.